Dogs in them, but they did, they were adamant, every single one of them, about not allowing dogs in bowling park.
Okay. Any, any discussion? Ms. Wilson?
There's an or- I think we have an ordinance that there are no dogs in parks at all. So, how do we go about including dogs in the park and excluding dogs in one park and, and having dogs in the parks during special events? Wouldn't there have to be kind of, I mean, maybe we can vote on it tonight, I don't know, but it seems like we'd have to do away with an ordinance in order to take care of it.
Well, we would at least have to amend the ordinance, but I think you could vote, and then we just, we could take care of our ordinance.
Yeah, we would amend the ordinance now.
And we are, we are allowing dogs in Etowah Park.
And we're talking about the trails as well. There, I mean, there's, the ordinance actually specifically prohibits dogs on the trails. So, if you're gonna allow them on the trails, we have to delete that from the ordinances.
Okay. Mr. Peppers, you got something?
Well, in addition, I believe at the last meeting, you also discussed if you did want to allow dogs, that you might want to make some restrictions as it relates to the length of leash that those dogs could be on.
Yeah, I would think no more than ten feet anyway, I don't, I wouldn't think.
I think six is more than adequate.
You say?
That's, when you go to buy a leash, that's one of the standard lengths that you go by. I'm sorry, I think six feet exactly because of that's, if you go buy a leash, that's one of the standard lengths that you can just buy. Instead, I don't remember ever seeing a ten foot, I know a six and a fifteen, then you get the expandable ones.
Yeah, you have some that go out there twenty, twenty-five feet, you know, way out there. I don't have a problem with six feet or, you know, something like that. Um, who we got? Ms. Wilson, you got something else?
No.
No, I just want to be sure that we're clear that the option for no dogs in bowling park, right?
Yes, that's, that's-
At all. So, we would have to have a sign there that says dogs are excluded from bowling park. That gives anyone who wants to be in a park and they're afraid of dogs and they wanna have their children in parks without dogs, they have an option in the city of Canton to go to a park and a trail without any dogs.
Right. Mr. Peppers?
I would just, I would just mention-
Oh, no.
There we go.
I would just mention that one of the things we could consider in doing that is that having new signage placed at bowling park, which says that dogs are not allowed at that park, but that dogs are allowed at the following parks, so that people who enter there know where they could go in exchange for going to bowling park.
Ms. McGrew?
Yes, with my personal experience with training dogs, I've been to many obedience classes with dogs from my past, six feet is the optimal length of leash for having control over your animal.
Okay, good. You have something to add? Okay. Uh, all right. Mr. Grant?
Yes, I would like to motion we allow dogs in Heritage Park and the trail connecting to Etowah Park with a, on maximum of a six-foot leash.
Um, now, um-
Up to six foot.
Bowling, and, and not exclu- all parks excluding bowling. And all parks excluding bow- bowling, yes.
Are we talking about all the other parks?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
No, well, I mean, you're talking about the little parks, Brown Park and everywhere else?
Yes, sir, yes.
That was it, that was it. Any other questions? I said we had a motion, who, who, you seconded it? Sandy made it or you made it?
I made the motion, ma'am.
Okay, who seconded it?
Second.
Okay, we know now. Uh, Mr. Grant made the motion, Ms. McGrew seconded the motion to allow dogs in, in all parks with the exception of, uh, bowling. Mr. Frank Yon?
I was wondering if we would, would want to add a restriction to keep them out of the playground areas themselves. Because every one of the playground areas is clearly delineated, I believe. And that would also help some, alleviate some of the concerns with children.
That should not be a problem, or, no one should object to that, that has a dog walking in the park, certainly. Okay, we, you wanna amend your motion to include that?
So amended the-
Okay.
Excluded the playground?
Ms. McGrew seconded it. Okay.
Did you have the leash length in there?
Yes, let's it up to six feet.
Any other questions or comments? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no, all members voting for the motion. Yeah, the, the, uh, the motion and the vote was to allow dogs in all parks with the exception of bowling. Restrict the leash length to six foot and-
Restrict, exclude them from-
Oh, exclude the pra- playground, designated playground areas for children. Yes. Anything else?
I'd like to address Mr. Peppers, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
We'll need to get the sanitary stations moving right away in the signage. How long do you think it'll take to get the sanitary stations set up?
We got those within a couple of weeks.
Absolutely, it'll be about seven to ten business days, and we'll have those in place. Also, when, last year when we allowed the dogs into Etowah River Park, we actually ordered more pet waste receptacles than we needed for the fact of, in the future, if the other parks were open, that we have some right now that we can pull out of Etowah River Park, because we don't need seven in the park. So, we have some now that we can move and move them into Heritage, um, at the trailhead at Heritage and in the Heritage Park as well.
I would think we would also need to add some trash receptacles so that, uh, there would be a, a convenient place to deposit the waste.
Yeah, also, yeah, so sorry.
And I was gonna say, and the other thing we're gonna look at as well is, uh, is adding some watering stations for dogs as well.
That's nice.
Yeah, and on those pet waste receptacles, there are little trash cans up underneath where you can get the bags out of. So, there's trash cans right there that our guys empty and put new bags in all the time.
Ms. Wilson?
Special events are excluded from this ordinance. For instance, when, um, River Fest is in Bowling Park, can people bring their dogs?
There's no dogs in bowling, so that would, that would be against-
They will, but they, but they can't. No, that, that's what'll happen. I mean, they'll, they'll bring them in there, I guarantee you. Yeah, that's just like in Brown Park, during Festival of Arts, I mean, tons of dogs come walking through there. I mean, you know, people bring their dogs with them, part of the family.
I can tell you, at River Fest, since it is a kind of a gated event, they do not allow dogs to come in. If someone brings a dog, they have to go take them home.
Really?
Because they have not been allowed in the park, um, they do not allow them in. My wife used to be president of the Service League and she had issues with that before, so I know that one very well.
Mr. Peppers?
Part of, part of that reasoning is, is as those special events come in, we require them to have insurance. And depending on the event and the insurance and what all they have going on, like for instance, River Fest, they have decided from an insurance standpoint with everything they have going on in the park, to not allow them, even though the park does allow them.
Okay. Anyone else?
I was just gonna say the Arts Center Festival welcomes dogs.
Thank you. Okay, next item, discussion and possible action to establish city park hours. Anyone have a comment regarding that? Jack, go ahead.
I know we talked about this last time, and, um, I still have heartburn, just to be honest with you, about the winter hours, um, because we don't have lighting in Heritage Park. You know, we used to have some when they had the barbecue festival and they, they would leave them over for us. But when they moved that out, we, we don't have adequate lighting there. Unless we're, because we're gonna have, you know, it's gonna be dark by five thirty, six o'clock. And, uh, you've got a lot of people using that park. Uh, we'll have a lot more now. I just want us to think about that before we, before we, uh, have hours all the way across the board for every park. That goes for some of the other small parks, like up Muriel Street, the Scout Hut Park and all some of the others. You know, you're talking, those places are pretty dark. So, I'd like to see maybe the smaller parks and maybe, um, if we're not gonna put lights in, more lights in Heritage, I'd like to see, uh, us stop at whatever dark is there, because it's just not safe. Thank you.
Tom, what would you think about a, a, a dawn to dusk curfew without, unless they have, a event has a special permission and provides the lighting? I mean, I know at, uh, Etowah River, you know, I think some of those, they bring their own lighting, you know, to practice or play or whatever. If they did that and it was approved by, by the Director of Recreation, then maybe they could go up to ten o'clock. But I'm, I, I tend to think dawn to dusk, I mean, I don't know many people that really wanna walk in, you know, at three o'clock in the morning. That's just to me, or-
So, should we do-
Or after ten, after, up to ten o'clock.
So, all parks should be dawn to dusk, but then we can have an exclusion for-
Unless, unless those parks and fields are lighted.
Okay, unless it's lit, because then we, you know, you're talking harm and-
I'm not sure that, uh, the, the trails are, are lit well enough to, uh, I think sort of a safety issue there myself, but- Mr. Peppers, you had something, I think?
Well, I think the cleanest way to do that would be to say that all of, all of the city's parks are dawn to dusk, unless the Recreation Department has a provider that is utilizing field space and is applied to use that field space and is providing lighting, or unless it's a special event that is utilizing that facility and they're providing lighting. Either one of those are gonna have an application and we'll have to approve it.
Yeah. Uh, who we have there? Ms. McGrew?
What will we do about Brown Park, which is right in the center of town? And people love to sit there under the lights at midnight and take pictures of the moon. Are we going to disallow people in Brown Park?
I guess if it were the rules, you would, uh, but, you know, is it, is there adequate lighting there? I think that would be the, the question.
We, do we have, we don't have gates on any parks, right?
Etowah has a gate.
Not that we close, I think.
We keep them all open.
Etowah does have a gate.
But that's the only one, so I guess it's, I guess it's up to the person if, if the dawn to dusk is when we have our parks open. It's kind of like if you turn your head, what if you bring a dog? I think if you enter a park after, after dusk, that you enter at your own risk.
And that'd allow the police then to ask them, you know, what are we doing in the park? Absolutely.
Yeah. Mr. Grant?
Yeah, that's my question, is how, how do we enforce this and does dawn to dusk or set hours, is there an enforcement advantage to one over the other, and if we do set whatever hours?
I think from a police standpoint, the set hours help them, because they know they have that breaking point of eight, nine, ten o'clock, whatever the set hour is, as opposed to dusk, you know, what, what exactly is dusk to somebody?
It's sunset.
Yeah, exactly.
Sunrise to sunset, and there is a specific time for that.
Yeah.
You know, of course, I don't know if the policeman would wanna keep up with that.
That would be the really only thing about having a set time, but we can do dawn to dusk with these provisions in here for our athletic providers and special events.
Do you think that, is that satisfactory, and do you think the police would find that?
Absolutely, yep.
As safe?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Peppers? Do you have something? Your light, your light was on. Okay. Mr. Goodman, go ahead.
I did speak with Chief Mitchell about this last week, and, um, he, he also said that he, he thought that would be a, a better, maybe a better situation, because he could put patrols through there at obviously different times, so it wouldn't, everybody wouldn't know the schedule. But, uh, it'd be a lot easier if we had those type of set hours, because, um, you know, it's it very so much, one month to the other. You get in the middle of, of the year, I mean, end of the year there toward Christmas, I mean, it's dark at five o'clock almost. And, uh, it's hard to patrol it, uh, you know, up till ten o'clock at night or whatever it is. But, uh, safety, safety always. I think we, we think that first, we're, we're doing fine. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion regarding that? We didn't make a motion on that one, did we? Do we need a motion on it, or you wanna, you know, one thing that we could do on that is actually, you know, we're in the process of, of setting up our Recreation Commission. I mean, they could actually, uh, look at that, once we get that established, once, uh, Mr. Peppers is actually working on, uh, uh, putting together, and Tom, I guess, putting together a, a, uh, maybe an ordinance change to set this board up along with what their duties and responsibilities and authorities are. So, you know, they could do that, or we can, we can go ahead and act on that one. Mr. Peppers?
If, if you, if you would like, what we could do, uh, I know, uh, Tom and I have, have kind of sat down and, and put together a list of what we think, uh, Parks and Rec Advisory Board would look like. Um, we can bring that to the August, um, council meeting work session for discussion. Uh, bring the names and all of that at that time, get them appointed in August, and give them the month of September to look at some of the other items, such as types of vehicles in the park, uh, activities to be permitted within certain parks, um, so that, so that that gives them a task to kind of work into.
Okay. Is everybody agreeable to that? Just bringing that back to us? All right, who you, you talking about?
Yeah.
He's gonna bring it back to us in August, with, with a kind of full scope of the, of the, the new recommending board along with the, uh, uh, suggestions for some more of these rules.
I mean, I, I do think if I were gonna, if I were gonna choose one of these remainders, or two of these remainders that you need to do, I do think the drones is important. That's, that's a city policy, that's something you might wanna entertain tonight. And then also the, um, the, uh, action to terminate the contract on the concession stand, those two should be done tonight.
Well, you know, I, quite honestly, I think the park hours is pretty important, too.
I would too. I mean, I would do that, though, go ahead and do that, right. But I think as it relates to activities and, and types of vehicles, that's a good discussion item for our Recreation Board.
Well, I would go ahead and move that we set the park hours for dawn to dusk and, um-
With the stipulations of the, of special events or-
With the stipulations of special events and permitted events.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we'll have a motion in a second. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Do we say that it would be easier if we said sunup to sundown and then dawn to dusk would be, who knows?
Well, yeah, yeah, you know, that's probably a good idea, sunup, sunrise to sunset, uh, because that is a particular time. And, and somebody would be, it's a, it's a little more vague to say dawn to dusk than it is sunrise to sunset. Sunrise is specific every day. Do you have a problem with that?
No, I amend, amend the motion.
Okay.
I'd say-
We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Uh, Ms. McGrew?
Mr. Gillen, we had talked about lighting the trails between Heritage and Etowah. Have those lights been installed?
They have not been installed yet. They're on order. Um, so I believe, I heard today, I think it's what, six weeks, is when they'll be in to the contractor. And at that point, um, and I know that I met with Georgia Power this week about getting the transformer put at Heritage behind the lofts. And at that point, then once the lights come in, then they can then install them at that point. So, it'll probably be another two to two and a half months before those are installed.
And one thing I'd like for the Recreation Commission to consider is if we change the park hours to a certain time and that time includes darkness, will we need to install extra lighting? And how much lighting would we need?
Um, probably not on the trail, uh, because we're gonna light the bridge as well and the boardwalk. Um, the trail in Etowah River Park, there's sufficient lighting as of now. Uh, we will need, as everybody said, Heritage Park needs additional lighting in there, um, so that would have to be lit. But as far as our pocket parks are concerned, I think they're fine the way they are. And we can keep those hours, you know, if they, if the advisory boards decide, hey, we need, you know, exact specific hours for our active parks, our passive pocket parks, we can just have, we can remain the dawn, uh, or the sunrise to sunset hours.
Does Venture Atkins Park have any lighting on it? I haven't noticed.
No, it does not.
How, are shenanigans to a minimum in that area?
Yeah, we have not heard anything, you know-
There's shenanigans?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Because Chief Mitchell always informs if something's going on inside the parks or whatever, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Grant?
So, my question is if we're not allowing people in the parks or on the trails after dark, why are we lighting the trails? Are we spending that money?
We are spending that money, you've already approved it. Um, I think part of it is that we do have some responsibility, even though we are closing it from a public safety standpoint along that trail, because we are close to the river. Um, and, you know, it, it is an expense, but if you, if you build the trail and somebody gets back there on it and our officers need to be back there, we're better off to have it lit.
Anyone else? Can we have a motion in a second? Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no, all members voting for the motion. Okay, discussion and possible action on whether to allow drones in city parks. I mean, anybody have any thoughts on that? I mean, I don't, personally, I'd, I'd say that was a no-brainer, you know, but-
Yeah, I, I move that we do not allow drones in the city parks.
I'll second that motion.
Have a motion in a second, that's about drones. Now, do we, do we consider that as, should we include any aerial type motorized toys or whatever? I mean, you know, you got, you can fly these model planes and stuff out there, too. I don't, I mean-
Yeah, there's one thing that was stated in the memorandum that you guys received, uh, talked about, um, unmanned aerial aircraft.
Okay.
Um, engine-powered models, toys, so it kind of covers the gamut there.
So, we wanna, that includes the full scope of those items?
Yes, the recommended, uh, what was in your recommendations there, so.
Okay.
Flying saucers, too.
Yeah.
I had one question. Um, I know that some coaches and some leagues want to film practices and film games. Would we not permit that if they had a special permit to have an activity in the park and they would like to request being able to film their-
With a drone?
With a drone.
No, because as we talked about a couple of weeks ago at the last meeting, uh, those things can crash, especially if somebody's not adept at using them.
I just wanted to raise the question, because I know it would come up later.
Yeah, no, it'd be a safety hazard.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Goodman?
Yeah, and I know what, what you're getting at, um, but somebody that's been around athletics all their life, pretty much, we used to film them, but we got up in a, you know, we, we'd rent one over, um, U-Haul or over at Home Depot and get up in it, and you, you can film while you want to, you don't have to have anything.
Yeah.
I miss you, it would come up later, so I think-
Yeah, you're right.
It will. Okay, we have a, we have a motion in a, in a second, uh, as to prohibit drones and other aerial toys or vehicles or whatever, uh, from, from being in the parks. Are there any other discussion or questions? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no, all members voting for the motion. We might just do all these, just go ahead and get rid of all of them, you know? Item K, uh, discussion and possible action to provide, uh, thirty-day notice of intent to terminate concessions contract with Wanna Play Baseball Inc. I think, Tom, it is discussed that with us, that it didn't seem to be working out for that particular vendor, so if, I'll entertain a motion to approve the, uh, termination of the concessions contract with Wanna Play Ball Inc.
Second.
Ms. McGrew made the motion, Mr. Goodman seconded it. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no, all members voting for the motion. Thank you. Item L, discussion and possible action on types of vehicles to be permitted in city parks. How do you define vehicle? I mean, is this something you ride totally? I mean, you gotta be something you're on with wheels, whether it's got a motor or not, right?
Absolutely, you're talking about bicycles or inline skates.
Skateboards?
Skateboards, tricycles, uh, even the, the old big wheel things.
Okay.
You know, you could, like you were talking about, you could talk about ATV or UTV as well. And so, you could sit there and you say, well, hey, we're gonna ban any kind of elec- electrical, uh, mechanical vehicle, uh, but we'll allow, you know, those that are manual, like bikes, skates, skateboards, that kind of thing.
Mr. Goodman, you have, you have something?
Um, handicapped people that have a, had, the only place they, way they could go would be with a, most of the time, it's an electric wheelchair.
Absolutely, yeah, they'll have access to that, yes.
They will have access?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Okay. And also, children with, uh, you know, big wheels and, and electric cars and Jeeps and whatever they got. I didn't know, is there, is that what you proposed, disallows that or not?
No, yeah, those will not be allowed.
Okay.
Bicycle, inline skating, skateboards, tricycles, that kind of thing will be allowed, but not anything like, like you were talking about.
Right.
No motorized vehicles at all.
But on our trails that we build in the future, I know there's been a lot of talk through the years, of course, we haven't gotten there yet, but uh, about, uh, if doing rollerblading and that kind of thing and, and bicycles. So, is this gonna be a hardship going one thing or the other?
Well, that, the inline skates or rollerblades and roller skates, all the, they're all the same thing. So, yeah, they, that's the recommendation here, was that all those would be allowed.
Anyone else have any questions or comments regarding that? Do we have a motion to, uh, approve?
So moved.
Okay, have a motion, have a second. Okay, Mr. Goodman seconded it, and Mr. Grant made the motion. Any other discussion? And what we are approving now is what you have recommended, I believe, so, to not prohibit any motorized vehicles other than that vehicle for handicapped or something like that. And, um, uh, allow for the, uh, ro- uh, roller blades, the skates, the skateboards, bicycles, big wheels, uh, scooters, whatever, that is not motorized. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Uh, any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no, all members voting for the motion. Discussion of types of activities to be permitted in city parks. I guess the last week sort of brought this to my attention in that we, we talked about moving, moving, um, uh, Heritage Park from basically passive to, to more active.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, I certainly don't have a problem making it more active, but I think we've got to consider the types of activities that would be permitted. And I guess we're open for discussion on that particular issue. Do I have any comments, questions? I mean, I can see, I can see where, you know, a, a couple could go out there and, and play toss with a baseball, but I can't see batting the baseball out there.
That would be illegal. We will not ever have baseball practices or schedule any baseball, softball activities in Heritage Park ever. Uh, we do have five diamond-shaped fields in the city, and those are where all of our baseball and softball take place.
But what about soccer?
Soccer would be, granted, what we run is out of Etowah River Park. But if somebody wants to come and kick a soccer ball around in there, if, open it up to be active, then that's what it would be allowed to, to take place.
Okay. Anyone else?
I, I think, I think, I don't really think we should open Heritage Park to soccer.
Well, if you, if you recall back when we established the ugly net that went up out there, there was a reason for that. And the reason was, as I've mentioned, I think numerous times, is that the soccer balls, we were getting complaints about soccer balls crossing those paths and, you know, kicking them everywhere. Also, there was quite, honestly, a, quite a bit of organized type soccer play there. And my guess is if Heritage, if, if Etowah is being, uh, utilized for soccer and there's not enough room, you're probably gonna see them spill over down to Heritage. And I don't, I just don't know whether that's a good idea or not, to be honest with you, but- Mr. Yon, do you have something?
I was just going to say that this particular issue, I think, is exactly what we're trying to form the advisory board for. And this is probably something would be good to defer until that board is in place and let them kind of give us guidance. And this is probably something would be good to defer until that board is in place and let them kinda give us guidance on what would be the proper way to categorize our parks. That would be my suggestion.
I think that's, I think that's a good idea. Anyone have any question, a comp, uh, argument with that? I think that's, that's a good idea. Mr. Grant?
I do, I do think that's a great idea also. I just also wanna say that we do have the big open fields there that aren't being utilized. And we did have the net up and a lot of soccer being played on the other side of the net. Took the net down. If we say we don't allow soccer, were those people supposed to play soccer now? So I, I do think there's a need, and we have open fields that aren't being utilized, so. But I do think it's a great, great issue for the commission to discuss and give us some recommendations.
Sure. Anyone else? Okay, let's move on down to the next item and review the finance policy. I think Nathan had asked that, that our point of committee to work with him and to come back and, and make some recommendations to us. And what I would like to do is, I guess, point the three J's, John, Joe Allen, and Jack. And so that, that's one from each of the wards, and let them work with Nathan and, and come back to us on recommendations. Is that okay, we all? Since John's not here, we'll put him on there. Okay. Yes. Right, Billy?
Yes.
Okay. A discussion in council direction on mixed drink audit follow-up?
As you recall, we brought to you the results, a draft of the results from Georgia Municipal Association on our audit of the mixed drink tax. And what we were basically, as a staff recommending to council, is that we follow a procedure that would allow us to notify the restaurants and give them fifteen days to look at the results of the audit and file any, you know, concerns or complaints or, or provide us with additional information that might show us that, that, you know, they have an issue with the audit as the way it was reported to them. And then at the end of that fifteen-day period, you have a thirty-day period for those restaurants to pay any delinquent taxes and the penalty, but not the interest. So you would basically be giving city manager the authority to abate that interest for a period of thirty days while those payments are graced in. And then after that thirty-day period, anybody who has not paid would be responsible for paying the delinquent tax, the interest, and the penalty at that point. I'm sorry?
So a business would have forty-five days?
Basically.
Fifteen and then thirty?
Correct.
Anyone have any other comments? Mr. Grant?
And then what, what, what is the repercussions if they don't pay?
Well, I mean, we, we're, we're the ones that provide them with the, with the license to be able to sell that type of beverage. If, if someone's delinquent and they're not paying and they're not making an action on it, we could always pull the license. We did have, as, as we mentioned at the last meeting, we did have one business that clearly had some issues as it related to alcohol sales. And, and speaking with the CFO, we would, we're, in that case, we're likely gonna sit down with the city attorney and draft a letter to turn over to the Department of Revenue so that they can investigate that potential restaurant. This is the first time we've done this particular audit, and I think in fairness to those businesses, we have to provide them with a copy of it, show them how the research was done, give them an opportunity to answer it, you know? Let them know, hey, you either, you overpoured, you underreported kinda deal. And you do owe the taxpayers, you do owe the coffers these funds, but we're willing to delay that interest for a period of time for you to come into compliance.
I think your recommendation is very, very fair. I would just suggest we do that sooner, as soon as possible, because I've already had several questions about that.
And, and we've looked, I, I spoke with, with Nathan about this. I think what we would do is we would say basically, our goal is to get the letters out on August first. That'll give us time to prepare them and get everything together, get the letters out on August first, and have until the fifteenth to respond. And then that thirty-day period would take place from the fifteenth on.
Ms. Wilson?
You may have said this, was there a discussion that the penalties would be waived?
No, we would still charge the penalty. We would not charge the interest.
Okay. The interest would be waived, but not the penalty?
But not the penalty.
Okay.
Anyone else? I think, I think you do need a council vote if, if you're waiving the actual interest on, on those initially, so. I entertain a motion to approve the recommendation there. Have a motion, Mr. Grant. I second, Mr. Yawn. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose no? All members voting for the motion. Discussion in council direction on the LCI master plan implementation. Mr. Peppers?
As we discussed at the last meeting, we just approved the, and adopted the master plan update that was provided for the livable centers initiative. How do we move forward with that? I, I provided you a memo that kinda outlined some things. I did receive several questions and, and comments from council members. I think probably the best way to move forward with this is for us to have a special work session of the mayor and council just to discuss the LCI, what was included in it, how it was outlined as it relates to action items and things like that. And from that point, we could decide how we wanna implement it as, as a, as a city.
Okay. Any comments, questions? Okay. Approval of the mowing maintenance agreement with Georgia Department of Transportation regarding the school beacon at State Route Twenty and Riverbend Way.
This is what we brought to you the last time, which basically gives us permission to trim around those beacon signals, even if they are not in our right of way.
Mr. Grant?
Motion to approve?
Have a motion. Mr. Grant made the motion. Mr. Yawn seconded the motion. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no? All members voting for the motion. City managers report?
Have two items to report. The first is an update on our paving. We are completed with the paving in Rivergreen. That paving is completed. The only thing we have left to do there is the striping. As it relates to the local maintenance infrastructure grant, we have finished the paving on Oak Street, Cherokee Street, and John T. Pettit Street. We have also, in phase two, completed paving on Shamley Lane. We will finish Cherokee Overlook Drive this week. I think it's, it's tomorrow. Is it already done? It's tomorrow, I believe, on the schedule. Golf Course Road is complete. Governor's Walk Drive is complete. Hillcrest Drive is scheduled for tomorrow as well. Ivy Drive, Lee Street, Longview Road, Morse Hill Road, and Oakdale Roads are all complete. Those that remain are Brown Street, Hospital Road, Mary Lane, Alpine Street, Center Street, Elmwood Street, North Etowah Drive, Westview Lane, and Westview Street. In speaking with the contractor, we think that we'll be finished with all of the paving and all of the striping within the next month on those projects.
Sounds good. They're doing a good job.
Yes. One, the, the other item that I have is, is relative to, relative to the Rivergreen streets. We do have one, we do have a change order on that contract that, that I am gonna need council to act on. When we initially set out the bid for that contract, there is a small street in one of the pods that's unnamed that we did not include in the contract, and it was gonna be significantly more for us to remobilize to have that street paved. And so the cost on, the cost on, the total cost on the change order is ten thousand, six fifty-eight ninety above and beyond the contract that was issued. That particular area is in one of those sections that's currently under development, so there's an add-on fee there. So it's really us fronting the money until the add-on fee for the light gets put in. But that will have to be approved by council because it is a change order.
Okay, do we have a, a motion to approve that change order? Motion by Yawn, seconded by Goodman. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose no? All members voting for the motion.
That's all I have.
I have one item under the mayor's report here. I received, we received a, a letter from, our city attorney received this, a letter from Dana Thompson, who is the attorney for Canton Housing Authority. And I'll just read it. It's basically doing, dealing with their request to refinance some bonds for a living, assisted living facility. But in two thousand and fourteen, the housing authority did a bond issue to assist in financing the Provident Group Canton Cove Properties LLC project, the assisted living facility on Reinhardt College Parkway and Highway one forty. The developers want to refinance the bonds primarily in order to get a better interest rate. The required TFR hearing was held on July the sixth at eleven. No one appeared in opposition. Also, as always, we request the mayor's signature on the attached. Bond council has asked for the signature as well. We would appreciate if you would review the enclosed and execute the same. Basically, in two thousand, actually in two thousand and thirteen, we, we had a, it was before our council and the, it was, it's action on approval for Canton Housing Authority to issue bonds for Canton Cove Senior Living Development. And the, and the minutes reflect that following discussion, Councilman Rush made a motion that council support Canton Housing Authority issuing bonds for Canton Cove Senior Living Development with the proviso that the city of Canton will not be liable for any payment should default occur. Councilman Goodman seconded the motion. It was five ayes and no nays. What they're just wanting to refinance is there is no obligation on behalf of the city. What happens is, I understand it, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that the, the fact that the local government is in support of the project allows them to get special treatment on, from IRS on the interest that is, are, are not them necessarily, but that makes the bonds interest-free or tax-free. Is it something like that?
There's some tax credits or something, yes.
Okay. Is there any, any other questions about that? If not, I, we need to go ahead and do this. It's sort of time-sensitive, and they just got this, the letter is dated the nineteenth, so, haven't had it long, so. I'll entertain a motion to approve that, so I can send that. We have a motion, have a second. Motion in a second. All in favor of decision five saying aye. Pose no? All members voting for the motion. Thank you. All right, and now I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to commend the scouts. Y'all have been so nice. You, you are, you're really, we, we know that the future's in good hands. We appreciate you coming, and we appreciate that you've been such good gentlemen while you've been here. Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. Do we have a motion in a second to adjourn? Did we get that? Okay, we have now, anyway, okay. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose no? All members voting for the motion.